By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Concha Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. We will start with the prayer of council.
O divine master, in deep humility, we place ourselves, our thoughts, and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge, and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word, and deed, so thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
(inaudible)
For the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on 111 West 10th Avenue for a conditional use application, and we will have Mr. Peters.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the scheduled date and time for the conditional use hearing of Jason R. Goldberg. Jason spells his name J-A-Y-S-O-N. The property is located at 111 West 10th Avenue. The zoning is BR-1 Borough Residential District 1. Mr. Goldberg is seeking a conditional use pursuant to Part 19(c). That's the HRC Historic Residential Conservation Overlay District. At this time, I will enter six exhibits, which consist of materials that Mr. Goldberg submitted to the borough. Exhibit B-1 is the legal notice for this hearing. Exhibit B-2 is the deed for the property. Exhibit B-3 will be Mr. Goldberg's zoning application form. Exhibit B-4 are building elevations prepared by Here's the Plan LLC, consisting of two sheets and dated October 18, 2017. Exhibit B-5 is a site plan for the property, and Exhibit B-6 is the planning commission report. So that Borough Council knows, and as you'll recall, it was last year that Borough Council adopted an ordinance that relates to single-family homes and the conservation of single-family homes constructed prior to 1967. Section 271905(c) of your zoning ordinance requires, contains certain requirements if an applicant wants to add in addition onto a single-family home constructed prior to 1967. So what you will be looking for tonight is to determine, one, whether the expansion is to occur only to the side or rear yards; two, whether the expansion conforms in general appearance, scale, building materials to the front facade that's remaining; three, whether the roof lines will be similar or complementary to the existing roof lines; and four, whether healthy, mature trees in the front and side yards are being maintained. I'll note that the Planning Commission at their April 12 meeting heard the application of Mr. Goldberg and recommended that this council approve Mr. Goldberg's application, finding that he met the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And with that, I know Jason is here. Jason, if you could come up and please present your case to council.
Hi, thanks for coming tonight. So what I'm proposing to do is take the third floor of the house, and as it stands now, the roof has a lot of damage, water damage and whatnot, so it's kind of ruining the whole structure of the roof and some of the floor on the third floor. And the roof, the way it stands, is very angled on the pitch. When you walk up the steps, by the time you hit the top landing, you hit your head almost on the ceiling as it is now. So it's really not usable space. So I'm just looking to basically keep the first and second floors of the house exactly how they are with no changes, and just raise the third floor and keep with the confines of all the neighbors. So I want to use the same siding material, same color, and just raise the roof.
Anything further, Mr. Goldberg?
No.
At this time, if council has any questions for Mr. Goldberg, I have just a few that I'll ask just very briefly. And Jason, I already know the answer to these because we spoke at the Planning Commission, but the expansion that you're proposing is limited to the side or rear yard. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as you just testified, the materials that you're proposing to use are consistent, not just with your dwelling, but with the neighboring dwellings. Is that correct? With those two questions, I think it would appropriate for council to ask any questions. Of course, your zoning officer is here if you have any questions for her. So the floor is yours, council.
Anyone from council have any questions?
No.
No. Mr. Goldberg, we did read through all of your proposals and are actually quite happy that you want to keep the home and not knock it down. We appreciate that. So if no one has any...
I have a question.
Danita?
Your balcony over the first floor, how are you planning on putting that up? Is it being projected out from the building, or are you going to have supports?
Supports.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Well, actually, I need to do one more thing, Bob. Is there anyone here, is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak in favor of this application? And is, oh, please, welcome.
My name is Joe Gordon.
Can you please just come to the podium? Thank you.
And please state your name and address for the, for council.
My name is Joe Gordon. I live at 107 West 10th Avenue in Concha Hocken. I do own the property. Lived there for over 25 years. I'm right next, will live right next door to Jason. I see no problem. He's, we've discussed it, and it'll be nice to have it updated. It is, needs a lot of repair. I see no problem with it. Other neighbors also feel the same way. Unfortunately, they didn't come tonight, but...
Well, we appreciate you coming, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Please.
Not in favor, just have some questions.
Sure, I will get to you in one, one second. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? Let the record reflect done, and please, if you have questions, ma'am, please come forward, state your name and address, and let us know where you live in relation to Mr. Goldberg's property.
Okay, my name is Anna Marie Travelling. I live at 139 West 10th, right down the street from this property, and I did not receive a letter in the mail. I just got told this by a neighbor, another neighbor who's not here tonight. What I'd like to know is, this is going to stay as a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
Okay, and so the only thing you propose is changing the third floor because of this damage?
Correct.
Okay, what about the back? Somebody mention a balcony or something? Did somebody mention?
No, the third floor...
Because in the letter, it doesn't really state much of anything. It just says he's looking for, I guess, a variance.
So on the third floor, the back bedroom, looking to put a balcony with, it's like a deck type of balcony somewhere at the back door. So if the master bedroom would just be an old walkway to the deck.
Okay, so basically, the house won't really be any bigger than it is?
I'm not changing the width, only the height.
Only the height?
So nothing on the sides, or the front or back.
Okay, and is this, this is going to stay as a single family?
Yes.
And is it going to be someplace where you're going to live?
I'm moving in, yes.
Oh, you're moving in. Okay, so it's not going to be a rental property?
No, no.
Oh, thank God. Okay, we have so many rental properties on my street.
Absolutely, I'll be living there for sure.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because like I said in the letter, there was not very much explained, which is unusual. Usually you state something about it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application further? Let the record, oh, please.
George Gappart, 11th Avenue.
Can you please come to the podium?
Please come to the mic.
George Gappart, 12th Avenue, West 12th. I would just want to know, you're going to raise the roof. What is the finished height going to be?
Thirty-five feet, the maximum of the bridge line.
Thirty-five feet, that's within the code, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You won't see it from your house, George. You won't see it from your house.
I'm always walking around, Bob.
I know. We're going to make you detectives.
Thank you.
Honorary.
Go, Bob.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Please let the record reflect that there are none. At this time, it would appropriate, should council desire, to make a motion on this application.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Goldberg, you will receive writ notice of this decision probably tomorrow.
All right, great, thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck.
President Leonard, if we can just do roll call real fast, now that we've closed the conditional use?
Yes, we can do that.
Councilmember Tuttino?
Present.
Councilmember Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Vice President Flanagan?
Here.
President Leonard?
Present.
Mayor Aronson?
Here.
Thank you very much for the record. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. There are two items under consent. The first is to approve and adopt the February 7th, February 21st, March 14th, and March 27, 22nd meeting minutes. And the second consent agenda item is to approve the March-ending Treasures Report and accounts payable in the amount of $555,248.19.
I would need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, the first item is to consider appointment, appointing an applicant for the Environmental Advisory Council vacancy. At this time, this agenda item will be tabled for further discussion and will be on an agenda at a later date. And then moving on to item B, is to consider reappointing B Bergville &amp; Company to conduct the borough's annual financial audit for the fiscal years ending 2018, 2019, and 2020.
I would need a motion from council?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
I'd just like to comment on that. The idea that we're using B Bergville for the next three years is just to go along with, since we started working with them on all of the deficits from our prior audit, we're going to continue working with them through the completion of all of those deficits, and at that point, then we would make a determination for a new auditor.
That's correct. So in the recommendation that I presented to council, there are specific items that are still outstanding, that B Bergville has been instrumental in working with the borough and our finance consultant in solidifying and completing. Those items consist of the OPEB requirement, the revised receivables, the adopted capital asset policy, an actual capital asset list, and evaluation of all of those assets. And the last one is the consolidation of borough's debt. That's probably the last outstanding item that we have to address, given that right now, we are in the midst of completing the capital asset list with the valuations that are included. The idea being that the transition, keep maintaining B Bergville at this point would enable us to continue in that positive trajectory that we're currently on. It is a normal practice, municipal practice, to maintain your auditor over a course of a number of years. Once we feel like we have a solid financial foundation, which we are in the midst of building, council and administration can look at whatever auditor they would choose to at that point, if that's the wish of council.
What I'd like to suggest is, as we're working through the various items over the summer to set ourselves up for the future, we talk about transparency in our processes. One of the things I'd like to get to is the idea of looking at all of the different vendors and how we look at reappointments. I know that we said we wanted to do RFP processes and different things, but I think we can set some policies and process up that will outline how we go about identifying whether or not they need to go up to RFP, or if we're going to continue for certain types of vendors for X number of years, like for auditors for three years.
Yep.
So I'd like to look at that process if council is okay with that, so that we can kind of set some guidelines moving forward, so it's true direction as we move forward.
I think that's great, and if I'm an administrative perspective, we would welcome that as well.
Okay. And then always at the discretion of council, if we have to change, we'll always have that caveat.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. Item A is to consider appointing a council representative to serve as liaison to the trustees of the Friends of Concha Hocken Parks. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peters briefly to explain how that liaison position would work.
So as council knows, when you set up this trust, part of the reason that we're allowed to accept donations is because we set it up as an entity separate and apart from council. So this position would not be a voting position on the trust. It would not even necessarily be an influence position, an influencing position on the trust unless it had permission from council to relay some type of information from council back. And in the reverse, it would be instrumental in relaying information from the trust back to, back to council. So the intention of this position is to make sure that there is an identified line of communications between the two entities, but not for the individual to actually serve a voting role on Friends of Concha Hocken. That is limited to the three board members that you have already selected. And that is all I have with respect to the position.
Does anyone on council have any questions on that? On that note, I would like to recommend that we do that position to, for Tina Sokolowski, since it is her ward.
I think that would be a wonderful idea, because it is in your ward, and you have such a vested interest in the property. It's blocks from your home, and you would be a great person to do that.
Do we make a motion on that?
Do we make a motion, Mike?
We do need a motion.
I would make a motion to appoint Tina Sokolowski as the liaison between the council and the Friends of the Parks of Concha Hocken.
That's great. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina. Next item on the agenda is to consider approving the recommended revisions to the vehicle and traffic ordinance and to authorize advertisement of ordinance number three of 2018 Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance Amendment. And again, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Peters to walk you through the revisions that are going to be made to the ordinance. Again, this is a collaboration of the departments in the administration, looking at needs within the borough at this time. Again, this doesn't have to be a final revision, but it is the revision that we're proposing for this evening.
So as council knows at your last meeting, we started about, we started to talk about how we're going to attack our ordinance amendments in the borough, and this was an excellent place to start, because we already had the legwork done to identify additional parking regulations that need to be put into place. So the ordinance is relatively straightforward. I'll walk you through it. The first section creates no parking zones above and below East Hector on Walnut Street, and that's for purposes of sightlines and turning in and out of Walnut Street. The ordinance in section two establishes municipal employee parking only between Jones Street and Walnut Street on East Elm, and that is the Public Works Building. It establishes two employee parking spaces between Harry Street and Hollowell Street on East 6th for the community center. It establishes red zone parking on Forest Street between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. That's not a change, that's actually already signed, but it is formalizing it so that the red zone parking applies there. And with respect to the red zone parking permits, we discussed a little bit about how staff, because a quote-unquote "red zone" permit is something that is somewhat amorphous. Staff does have the ability, ability to determine, for example, hours that that would apply. So it gives us some flexibility without actually having to do another ordinance again if, if we decide the needs of the, of the borough change. And between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue on Hollowell Street for Marywood Park, we're establishing two handicap parking spaces. That is the extent of this ordinance. It was prepared by my office. It was reviewed by staff here. I think that everything is in order, and it would be appropriate for you to advertise it, and we would have it for your consideration probably at the second meeting, second meeting in May. And get ready, because you're going to have more and more ordinances that we bring to you, but we're pleased to do it.
And we appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to advertise.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other business items on the agenda.
Anyone for public comment? Oh, okay. Yes, you can go up first. Please come up and state your name and address.
Deborah Stofall, 76 Poplar Street. Basically doing a follow-up from the last time I was here about the parking, the area of Ellen and Poplar Street. Thank the police officers for giving us one additional space, removing the handicap. But the situation down there still has not improved. And I know that the auto detailing place just cannot have its way by having eight cars out there in the same spot every single day. It's been almost a year. And I'm just like baffled as to why this is permitted. I think there is at least two cars that have, the stickers have expired, one has a flat tire, they have the business van, which I guess they were all booted out of the parking lot. So now they're on the street, including the company's van, which is parked very close to the bike trail. So that's a hazard, safety hazard, because when you're riding down Poplar Street, ready to cross the tracks, you can't see the people coming by on the bike path. I don't know why they're allowed. Why do they have preference over the residents there? I don't get that. And also, I ask as well, the business that's across the street from the park, they're holding up four or five parking spaces every single day. We have a very popular restaurant right there on the corner. Every day I come home, not some days, but every day I come home, I'm riding around the block at least three or four times. And then after about the third time, I'm parked at least a block or two blocks away from my home. I can't get my groceries in the house, but it's just still, it just doesn't make sense to me why they're allowed to do whatever they want to do, and the borough just has no, their hands are like tied. There can be an ordinance that, why would they need to have eight parking spaces, take up eight parking spaces out there?
Debbie, I have a question. Are they the same eight cars that have been there?
It's the same cars.
So if the police officers were to notice that, could we give them tickets or no, they're allowed to, as long as they have valid inspection stickers?
Well, it sounds like at least one of them, the, the registration is now expired, I think, is what you said earlier.
Yes, there's, I think, one or two that have expired. Other car has a flat tire. And these are not the customers' cars, so make that clear as well.
Right, right.
These are cars that are just parked there. I don't know who they belong to, but they are just parked there. They are not customers' cars.
So one of the things that we can do, you know, as we go through and we're, we're reevaluating parking districts within the borough, I've already written down that address. We can have staff go out and look and determine if it is a real issue and the residents are having trouble parking. It sounds like, it sounds like you are. Right now, we, right now, there's nothing for us to say, get those cars off the street. But if it becomes, for example, a residentially zoned parking district, there is something that we can do. So the first step would be to have our staff go out and take a look and evaluate whether or not it's, it's a legitimate issue. And it sounds like you've done that and it is.
I know that it's a light industrial area, so also up the street, I mean, like, they've been holding up those five parking spaces, the company across the street. I do understand the need for them to have those spaces so the trucks can swing in there, but I don't see them making deliveries after a certain hour. I've never seen them make deliveries on a Saturday or a Sunday.
As, as part of this evaluation, I think it would be good for us to look at it, and we'll do that.
Okay, so I would appreciate that. And also, with the auto detailing place, he has a lot of debris.
Yeah, oh, something else.
He has a lot of debris outside, on both sides. He has like two cars parked up on the neighbor's yard, but I'm sure that's going to change because they just sold that property. But on the other side and in back of the property, there's all kinds of containers, there's all kinds of debris back there, and that has been there for quite some time. I think that, you know, I think the way that he maintains the property, I just think that it just looks bad for the town. All the years that it took to build this town up, I was born and raised here, and when I was young, across the tracks was the factories and the mills. And at that point, they had been abandoned, so it's taken a lot of years to build up that area. You know, you got the nice apartments, you got the hotels, you know, you got, you know, a lot of nice, the tower is there, but, you know, you've got the auto detailing place just doing any kind of way, and he's just allowed to do it. So it's not just the auto detailing place, it's the light industrial area, period. They put their trash out Thursday, and the trash goes Thursday morning, but they don't put it out until Thursday afternoon, because they're going to be away Friday and Monday because, you know, they're going away now that the weather's getting warm. And so the trash just sits there from Thursday till, till Monday. So I won't dwell on that. I would just want to focus on the parking, and then I will get to the rest of the things that need to be done down in that area. But I think that all the effort, the politicians, all the people, we even had the President of the United States come here at one point. And a couple months ago, I heard them call out Concha Hocken on Saturday Night Live, and I was shocked. So that means, that's telling me, if they're on Saturday Night Live, if they gave them a shout-out, then somebody's talking about Concha Hocken. And so why would you let an auto detailing place, what is the, the pool place? The pool place is horrendous as well. It's no longer a yard, it's a junkyard at this point, even though it's not zoned that way. So I just have to fight this step by step until there's some improvements made there. I think it's definitely impacting the quality of life for the residents that live there. And so I invite everybody up here to come down there, drive through Ellen and Poplar Street on your way, you know, going home or to the store, wherever you go, and just go by and take a look and see how, what it looks like. So thank you for your time, giving me a moment to speak, and I guess I'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to, I reached out to Sergeant Connor about this, he talked to them Tuesday, yesterday.
The auto detail place?
Dr. Decker.
Lieutenant, can you come to the podium? Sorry. Thank you.
Connor talked to him yesterday, gave him the Friday to get those cars addressed, the ones that can be, that can be considered abandoned, and if they're not, they're going to get tug-abandoned then. And that's a process also, to get rid of an abandoned, because there's one in the 200 block of East Elm now, it was smashed up, and it's been there for a while. The, the period that we have to wait to get that out of there after they've been cited and noticed, notified by certified mail expires tomorrow, and if it's there, it's getting towed. So when I saw you here, I checked with Sergeant Connor, because I figured I'd have to have an answer for you. And I did, and he said, he was, he was on lights and he was away. So now he's, he's back, and he, he was on days yesterday, and he stopped and talked to him. Okay, so he says Friday, if they're not, if they're there on Friday, they're getting tug-abandoned, with the ones that can be. And that'll start that process. Usually that gets them moving, when the orange sticker shows up. Okay?
Stephanie, could we also get some feedback from Ellen and I to see that they went down already once, and then we're, we're at from that?
Yep, we can confirm steps taken to date, and then we can confirm from a property maintenance side, next steps.
Okay. And you might as well put the pool site on that list.
Auto detail and the pool, yes.
And there's another one? Which one?
The one I've been fighting for.
That's the one we've been fighting, yeah, I know that one's been cited multiple times. Okay.
Mr. Gappart?
Next meeting, I'll sit closer to save, save time. George Gappart, 131 West 12th. Since this is a parking evening, this is a perfect night for me to be here. I just came from the Little League Field, couple games down there, a couple grandkids. Saturday, of course, was opening day down there. I have an elderly wife, she's a little younger than me, but she's a... I have an elderly wife. She's a little younger than me, but she's elderly. And, um, we go down there and on Saturday, as on most times we go down there, there is no parking available. Now, I know it was two or three years ago, the borough extended the parking lot down, uh, by the minor league field or behind the major league field. But this, to me, the problem, and I know this is a third rail for you, so I'm just going to, I'm going to give you the statistics and you can take it from there. I took time out of my busy schedule on Sunday to go down at nine AM in the rain, nobody in the park. Twenty-four cars parked in Sutcliffe Park. Now, I think we all know where they're from, and I know parking is a problem. But when the people go down there to use Sutcliffe Park for Little League games or for anything else, the parking should be for people that are going to Sutcliffe Park. I understand all the problems, and my suggestion would be from perhaps, um, September or from April to September, limited two-hour, three-hour parking signs, because there are people using it for their own park, private parking spaces. Like I said, nine AM, Sunday morning in the rain, twenty-four cars parked. It, it's not a public street.
Right, right.
It's a park. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I'm getting away from that one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Want to think on that one. Any other public comment? Please come up to the microphone again.
Hannah Marie Travely in one thirty-nine West Tenth Avenue. Okay, since you're talking about traffic, let me tell you my little story. All right? I wanted to go to the flower show this year, so I decided I was going to go park down at Spring Mill and take the train into Philadelphia. Go down to the station, there wasn't one space. Drive up the side of the streets. I had two-hour parking. Don't park here on Tuesday. Don't park here if you've got a pink shirt on. Okay, so I decided, okay, well, I can't park any here on the east side, so let me go back over. Because I didn't want to go back home because I live on Tenth Avenue. I didn't want to walk eleven blocks down to the Conshohocken Station. Okay, it was a windy, cold day. I didn't really feel that great that day. I just wanted to go to the show. So I went down to the west side, drove around, again, two-hour parking, don't park here during these days. So I thought, what am I going to do? Go home? So I drove over to where Saint Mary's Church is, where that contemporary parking condominium, whatever it is, and parked there. Because I needed to park someplace for four or five hours and not get a ticket. And basically, most of those people must go to work because the street was basically empty on that side of the street. So I went back home that night and I'm thinking, you know, during the week, I drive around, I go out, because I'm retired, so I go out. And there's people on Forest Street, there's people back where the lawnmower place used to be back there towards Twelfth Avenue. Uh, I'm thinking, gee, all these people can't be home. And so I guess my point to telling you all this is, I real, I know you all realize we have a parking problem, but I didn't realize it was this bad until I actually tried to park my car someplace for four or five hours just so I could take a train into the Phil, into Philadelphia. All the spaces down on Conshohocken, they were all taken too. So is there any, I don't know, I mean, you can put in all the angle parking you want, but there's just so much space. Uh, is there any plan to maybe expand some of the parking around the train station?
That, that, that's a good question, and I can promise you that it's one that we've posed to SEPTA, because, I mean, it's SEPTA lot, right? So we, we talk to SEPTA constantly with respect to trying to provide more parking.
They don't have a building there anymore, so it's just not being take up by a building.
So, so the answer is, are, are we discussing that with SEPTA? Of course, we, we are constantly. But it, it's sort of interesting because the issue that you're experiencing is contrary to the issue that the previous gentleman just, just mentioned. Because you have, so you're trying to find a space to park for four to five hours, and the residents down there, I guarantee you, are saying, people are coming from SEPTA and they're parking here for four to five hours, so we don't have parking.
Well, where I was.
It's all balanced, trying to balance it all out.
That day, there really wasn't anybody on that side of the street, which would have been going up Maple Street towards the higher avenues.
So, so the answer is, do we know that it's a part, that there's an issue? Yes. Does SEPTA know? Yes. Are we trying to work on it? Of, of course. And I hope, I hope we have good news for you at some point soon.
And, and the, and the, it's ju, when I, when I'm out during the day, it's just not residents. Most people have gone to work. Like, my street empties out. Everybody leaves around six, seven o'clock. Okay, but I see like the streets closer to Fayette Street, which must be businesses along Fayette Street, which have no place to park, so they park back on Forest.
Or we hope, we hope some of our residents are using the train too, but you're right. I understand.
Oh, I'm not talking about just down that end. I'm talking about going further up where I live.
Okay.
When I, I mean, I go up Tenth Avenue and turn over on Forest and go up to Eleventh to go to the light to go down to Fayette Street. But I notice a difference at different times of the day that there are cars like back on Forest, all the way back to Twelfth. Um, people come from Stone Rose to park down on Ninth past Forest because they can't park anyplace else. I noticed that businesses down near the post office, when I go to the post office, all those streets are parked up. I mean, if I want to go to Dr. Goldberg's office, my eyes examine, I just might as well walk, even if I planned on going someplace after, because there's no place to put a car. So, you know, I'm just letting you know, I mean, I know we don't have any more square footage in the one acre that, one square mile that we are, but it's really, I was just surprised. And then that day I went to the, the flowers, it's like, wow, like, like, what do I do with this car? Just go back and walk down twelve blocks? I mean, you know?
Right.
So anyway.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Council comment? Mayor Harrison?
Always. The, um, Philadelphia Phoenix, our professional flag football team had their opening last weekend, which unfortunately was kind of a washout. But they reached out and would like us to attend their game on Saturday. They asked if we do want to come, that we show up at six, and then they will have us do something like throw the first frisbee or, or something like that. Uh, but they're really, really excited, and we met them, um, at the last council meeting, um, and it should be a really fun event.
Mayor, just to concern, just to confirm, it's this, sorry, this Saturday at six PM.
This Saturday, the game is at six-thirty, and they asked that we be there at six.
I would love to, but unfortunately I'm out of town.
I'm at my daughter's bachelorette party.
I'll be there.
All right.
If it's not raining, I'll be there.
I think it's supposed to be nice.
Right.
Okay.
I will be there. It might be a little late, but I will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Stokely?
Yes, I'd just like to comment on Saturday. It was a beautiful day. Little League opened up, and it was great. There was a lot of young families down there. And kept, some of the counselors there, Anita, Colleen, Karen, and it was just a, a really nice day. And you know what's great about it? There's so many different kids you don't know and families in this, coming into this town. And it's just great to be down there. And we do have to do, do some, some thinking about some parking down there because we're going to have probably on Thursday nights, the biggest night down there. If we have a, a band down there and they have the field going with the rough-touch football, Little League, I mean, it really gets crowded down there. So maybe we, Lieutenant, we get some enforcement down there on Thursday nights. That's the biggest night down there at the park. And also, uh, seven-thirty mass at, uh, Saint Matt's. Um, they announced that they were having seven christenings that day. So that's, that's fabulous. That's just unbelievable, unbelievable. So I just had a comment on that.
Councilman Stokely, do you want to mention polling place?
Oh, yes. Um, you know, we lost our polling place at Ethan Fayette, so the county has agreed that we would do temporary the lobby of Borough Hall here. They did search. They searched throughout the borough. They just couldn't find a place.
So, yes, so the county has come and requested, they, they reached out to the borough to see if we had any suggestions or could assist them in finding an alternate polling location. Um, after assisting them, um, the, there were no viable options. So we've offered them the first, the, they asked for the first floor lobby, and we coordinated the section that we can provide.
So we'll keep searching. I mean, we, we need a place for May.
Right.
Colleen, you have somebody raising her hand back there?
So are you saying that, uh, the Borough Hall on, um, eight, we're going to go there anywhere?
It was sold.
It's sold.
Yeah.
Last, last election, uh, we were going to go there.
Yes, How, How Properties was very nice and, and let us use it for the last election, but now they are starting the process of remodeling, so it's not an option.
Right here in the lobby.
Oh, right here.
Correct.
And we'll make sure everybody knows that. We'll, we'll, I'll pass out whatever I have to do and get on the social media and get, get the word out where we're.
Yeah, the Borough Hall.
The sixth ward will vote.
And we'll advertise it as well.
Yes.
George?
Anybody use the, uh, Washi's number two firehouse?
Yes.
Yeah, Ward five.
Oh, Ward five, okay.
And it's very crowded.
They did a search, George, so. They don't pay enough.
No parking.
Yeah, no, I have parking in the back.
Okay.
Down at Sutcliffe?
I'd just like to piggyback off of him for the, uh, opening of the Little League season. They have twenty-three teams. Lot of little ones, and it was really great to see them out there. The, the neighborhood is changing over. There are lots of babies. So now we just have to wait for them to grow up to become the older ones, but it was a fun day and it was really nice.
Yes. Uh, I don't have anything. Uh, Mayor, did I hear that, um, the cleanup was a washout and there's a rescheduled date?
Yeah. So the, um, original trail cleanup on April seventh is rescheduled to May fifth.
May fifth.
Everything else will be the same.
Okay, thank you.
And that's for the trail cleanup?
Uh, it's actually a neighborhood streets cleanup now.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, neighborhood street cleanup?
Yes.
So the trail moved forward, and this was a separate day, rain out, rescheduled, May fifth. Okay.
Yes.
I've got a question, um, on the trail, okay? And not taking nothing away from your, your organization, I think it's a great thing, but why do we clean up county property?
We're not, we're not.
It's a great thing to do our streets. I mean, our, our streets really need some attention.
Yes.
We're cleaning up.
So in working with the Public Services Department and the mayor, that was the determination that was made, is that we're diverting the attention from the trail, which is a county responsibility, to the, the borough itself, and however, the EAC and the mayor can help with the cleanup.
Never. Okay.
Mayor, would you like to talk about the car show and the art show that you just publicized today? Sorry, it's just, before we have our next meeting, it'll be May, and I think one of the deadlines is May eleventh.
We, we are going to do a, a more formal presentation next month, but, um, we are going to do an arts festival and car show on June second. We're going to have it at the, uh, Marywood Park, so it's going to be along, um, East Sixth and East Fifth and Hollowell. So we are, uh, we had our operations meeting on Monday, and everything seems, seems really good, so we're very excited.
Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, to clarify, based off of the weather and the inclement weather we've had the last couple of weeks, the park renovations will most likely not be complete at that date. So we will be, the fencing to protect the construction site will remain up. Um, we are diligently going through the process of starting that construction if the weather, if the spring weather would come and stay. Um, so that the, in the operations meeting, we discussed the layout, and it will be around the construction site, utilizing the streets and the upper portion by the community center and the Marywood Park House.
I have a question.
Yep.
How do you plan on exhibiting the cars? Are we blocking off or are we?
We, we're blocking off Hollowell, East Fifth and East Sixth.
The triangle, okay.
Perfect. Hank?
Oh, yes. Ms. Stokel, about the trash. I've been doing that for, I don't know how long. And, uh, code forces said that you're coming out now and giving citations, because I keep on hollering about people pulling the trash out on Sundays. And we don't pick it up on Monday, and they leave it out to Thursday. And they said they, last time around, they gave out a couple hundred citations, so maybe that'll start widening up, so. We're on the trash angle for you.
I am all set. Thank you.
I would just like to add on to the note of all the young children at Little League, um, and how nice it is to see all the new young residents, um, in the area with children. And I would, um, like to add to that note, when we got questioned last year on social media about why we were putting so much, uh, attention and time and money into our parks when we had, uh, not had an increase in families, um, I think it's nice to see that council did have the insight and knew that we needed this for our residents and our young families. So I'm very happy that we do have all the young families and all the children, and also happy that we are, um, taking an interest in providing for all of them. Anyone else? Meeting adjourned in record time.